We are good.
Make your ready for me. All right, so on a call to where the Communications Advisory Commission meeting for September 14, 2020. Roll calls on here.
I sort of figured I could look at everybody and I know everybody who's here and making everybody say here when I can look at all five of you was maybe silly. I did take it off. Just to throw you off too.
I always like, why is this so weird? All right, everybody's here. All right, and also want to welcome our new member. Is it two or one? Is it just Angie? Angel? Is it Angel?
Angel.
Angel, hi, Angel. Welcome to the Communication Advisory Commission.
Hello, thank you.
So we're just going to second item of the agenda, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Anyone want a second that?
A second.
All right, all in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, agenda has been approved. Our approval of minutes. Next item on the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All, I completely lost my thought. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, minutes have been approved. Next item, public comment. Any public comment?
We didn't have any written public comments submitted.
All right, moving on, staff report.
All right, we didn't meet last month, but you've got the last couple of months of our staff report. Obviously, the pandemic is still part of what we're doing, both in how it how we're adapting what what we've been doing in the past as well as far as like shooting. We've been doing shoots outside in masks and making and just sort of including that as what we do, as well as doing a lot of virtual programming. The library has been doing a lot of virtual programming with us through their summer reading program and they're going to continue to do virtual programming through the rest of this year is their plan, as well as just messaging things such as mask wearing and precautions that folks can take and trying to make sure that folks sort of understand what the status of the pandemic is here in Johnson County and in Iowa. We've also a couple other initiatives. Let's see, so going all the way back to July, we had our virtual Blues and BBQ, which is obviously a big difference from what we had done in years past. Streamed music all day with interviews from the committee. We, people could order from local restaurants, a preset meal. We had, and they could also pick up a six pack of Iowa beer if they wanted to along with their order. So we tried to make it as much what those core pieces of Blues and BBQ are every year, but also to do it socially distantly. The podcast has been ongoing. We helped arrange and host a series of six listening posts on social justice and racial equity at the end of July and the beginning of August so that to help the that folks could could talk to their elected officials. Let's see, those, if there's any other questions that folks have concerning those reports, be happy to answer them. If there's something else that you saw that you wanted to talk about.
Was there any feedback on the social justice and racial equity conversations?
I think that the they were well received. We had, I know that Tom, Tom made it to a few. I think we had between a dozen and two dozen at each one. The council has continued to discuss sort of what those next steps are. I think as a department, we're trying to incorporate what what we are takeaways into that, as well as to continue to push for for those pieces to happen throughout the city. The notes for those, I can certainly forward those on to you. Those are available online, as well as the report that the council had to discuss is also there online. So part of part of one of the, I think, a couple of the big takeaways for for us, you'll see a little bit is how we incorporated into the Great Neighborhoods Initiative, which which we'll talk about here in a little bit, but really trying to find ways to better to build better relationships between, and I think it has to go beyond just our police department, but between residents, particularly our black and brown residents and in our in our city and our police officers was something that that came out repeatedly, I think, and also just being mindful. So we've got some other initiatives, I think, that that we're pulling out of that and that will continue to work with in our department, as well as help bring other departments along too.
Anyone have any comments about the staff report?
I think there's also a discussion being continued on Facebook. I don't have the name right now. I think it's North Liberty Social Justice, but I don't believe that's really a city function. It's just a group that's continuing that discussion, but it might be worth looking into if anyone's interested.
And I thank you for bringing that up, Tom. I've been participating in these critical conversations with members of the community, both in Lynn and Johnson County. And each week, there's conversations every Wednesday at 7:00 PM and it's it's really a diverse group of individuals and each week is a different topic. Last week it was black literature. People were just talking about authors, black authors that they've read and their experience with that. So just another thing. All right, moving on. I remember when status and next steps.
Yeah, so we talked about this at our last meeting. We didn't have a name for it. This was our, what we wanted to do was we wanted to build a platform for, we framed it as oral storytelling, and I think that that's an important piece of it, an opportunity to to talk to and have people tell their stories in a first person way, and that it would allow us to do it in a in series over time to help the community share share their stories relating to different topics. And the first topic that we wanted timely and it was it was an opportunity was around social injustice. So we, we, we talked to some of the folks, particularly that came to those listening posts and approached some of those folks, as well as some of the folks that you folks have connected us to, trying to get essentially a pilot episode or two together before we sort of went live and solicited a larger, from the larger community, so that we would have a couple of examples and pilots. We have one that is done and complete, and I sent that link to you. And what we're trying to do is figure out if we if we need to wait till we can, we've had a few false starts with some of the folks who've sort of, we've talked to and they've either fallen through or it's taken us longer to sort of get that worked out. If we feel comfortable sort of moving forward with this project with the one with the one pilot, or if we need to sort of take a step back and try to solicit at least another one or two, you know, my, so that's, that's where we're at. I sent the link to you folks to look at, you know, our concern, our one concern is just not having a broad enough sort of example, so that that we want to make sure that this doesn't get to be too focused on any, on just police and policing or any one sort of facet, but we also want to move forward and solicit and solicit solicit stories. So that's sort of the basic, the memo laid out through the basic status we're at, and I'm looking for a little bit of feedback and input from you folks is to, if you think we're at a point where we can sort of put this out into the world and go from there.
I definitely think you should have more than just one before you start off. I do think to narrow down, to get that broad aspect of conversations is to narrow down the topics that you want to discuss, or themes that you want to go over and then solicit out to people those themes, like, hey, I remember when, and I was thinking of my own story. I was the only black girl dancing, you know, I remember dancing, being only person of color when I was dancing, or something like that. A more specific topic, I just named what came off the top of my head, but, or I remember when I moved to Iowa. I remember when I moved to North Liberty, you know, just narrow down the topics that you think you want to hear about, and then solicit that, because I think you'll get more people buy in, you know, like, yeah, I remember that. Yeah, I have a story about that. So that makes sense.
Are you, are you seeing more of an issue with coming up with content or more of an issue? I noticed there was another, you know, section in there about being a little tentative about filming during some with some of the COVID measures and things like that. So what, I guess, what is the main concern holding you back from a production standpoint?
Oh, I think it's people being willing to sit down with us. I think, I mean, obviously, this, it takes a certain, a certain willingness to be vulnerable and, and we're, we're trying to be sensitive, we're trying to be sensitive to that, too. I think, I think as far as shooting in a pandemic, I, we feel pretty good about about our procedures. Again, our plan is to shoot these all outside. You know, our, our crew wears masks while while we do it. So that's, those procedures, I'm not, I'm not particularly concerned about. We do want to, you know, I do worry about about launching this as it starts to get a little colder and how and how weather might impact our ability to produce these outdoors and which I think is safer. But I also, you know, I think we also want this to be an opportunity for folks, as I noted, to share stories without without any intent to publish them, right? People who just want to use this as an opportunity to share a story, whether it was an interaction with with somebody in city staff or somebody in the community, or just, or just get something off their chest in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a way that they need somebody to hear that. So I think that the concern really is sort of building that rapport and getting people comfortable with with going on camera or even just being willing to share their story in a written form.
I didn't look at the video, but the process of it, is it like an interview or is just one person like showed sharing their story?
Yeah, so this is, and I would encourage you to go and watch it. It is, we are, we are, our goal here is to, it's them telling their story. It is first person. It is, it's, it's ended up being about two and a half minutes. They're very, it's two cameras so that we can cut a little bit of the ums and ahs and just clean it up, but it's a very light touch. And it really, the goal here is, is to let people tell their story in their own words. And so, I mean, Julian can talk a little bit about the process. She sort of led this first, this initial one. Julian, would you be willing to sort of talk a little bit about the process that you took?
Yeah, so just to speak to your question that you mentioned earlier, Keisha, of, you know, what's the topic? So I Remember When is titled in that way, just so that it can be, I Remember When Stories of Social Injustice, which is what this theme is, but then later, maybe I Remember When North Liberty, you know, something very, you know, not nearly as impactful of social injustice, but just stories throwing back to the history of North Liberty or whatever it may be. For this season, or this theme of social injustice, we made contact with a young man named Quincy in town. He is the video that in the packet is linked for you as an example. He came to several of the listening posts and I approached him and asked if he wanted to share his story and I provided that prompt that's in your packet. When have you felt treated unequally? When did you notice the color of your skin may have made a difference in how others perceived you? We really asked, asked him and would like to ask others to focus on a crucible moment. We know there are many instances, unfortunately, that he could probably pull from, but asked him to choose one example, which you'll see in that example video. We would like to have this and the question tonight being, is it just this or maybe others to put out into the community and ask, you know, others to come forward so we can add, you know, eight, 10 of these two to three minute videos under the theme of social injustice. So the process with hit with him was, I talked to him on the phone, well, sent it first, I sent him the prompt via email. I scheduled a phone call with him. He told me his story over the phone and we scheduled a time just a few days later. My coworker Derek and I went out masked to his front, his yard. He wanted to do it on his front porch and we taped that two camera shot. It was not an interview style. It's just him, first person talking, telling a story. It was a quick, maybe 30 minute production to get everything set up and the sound check and everything. And it was a quick edit for Derek, because one of the reasons why we provide the prompt in an email and then also a follow-up phone call just for them to practice telling their story is not to shape their story at all, but just to have them focus on it to be able to tell it really concisely and impactfully. And we did share that sample video back with Quincy. He thought it was great. He's like, that is a very dope video. So I think he approves. And we, once you've all had a chance to look at that, we just want to know whether we think this is enough or if it's a little too narrowed to just policing as it, as it relates to social injustice, or if we need another example video to put out this call for social injustice stories that covers a variety of experiences.
Well, it's a decision of having it just for, I guess, like a first person perspective instead of like showing it as like a conversation or like a, I want to say, conversation slash interview.
Yeah, well, we really were inspired by I Am Denver. If you remember that link back in July, I think those were first person and they were short and it kept them, you know, two to three minutes. So that really, I don't know, Nick, I don't know if you thought more about it. I don't think we talked too much. I, we were really inspired by the way they did it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one of the things that we struggle with particularly, right, we wanted it to be an oral history sort of style. It was the I Am Denver and we were looking, we'd, we first heard from, from the Denver's Chief Storyteller, is her actual title, when she presented at a, at a conference. And, and, you know, we came away from that conference a couple of years ago, really trying to figure out a way that we could do this. And this seemed, and, you know, it's been one of those kind of ideas that we've been working, working around in the, in the office for a while. And, and this struck us as a really good opportunity to implement that, that style, that project. And it sort of coalesced here in this moment, as also as a way to help amplify some of, some of, some of those voices that are, that are unfortunately marginalized in our community. And, you know, as as a, as a white person, we're working with other white people, it struck us in this moment that, that in particular, the first person narrative from people of color was a helpful way to amplify those voices in a way that we, we just couldn't otherwise.
I'm not saying anything bad about the first person. I think it's great. I think the only thing is that this is just a pivotal time for us to have conversations together. And if you showcase that, especially in the video, maybe it will inspire more people to have conversations together.
And I think that's a different project.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but I think, I think the project that you're proposing is different than the project that we, that we talked about two months ago and started down this path.
Another thing I'll just point out regarding what you just said, Keisha, is this is very much for someone to, and I think you feel this after watching Quincy's, you watch it and you, you feel like you're putting yourself in his shoes. He shares a story of when he was 10 years old, what he experienced as a 10 year old and how he was made to feel at such a young age. And you, you think about that for yourself or your children. And so the whole, the whole point of, I think, I Remember When is maybe more so for the themes that we pull out down the line. And this one especially, that's a very serious topic like social injustice, that is really to put yourself in your neighbor's shoes, whereas some other topics that we might do down the line maybe aren't as kind of heart wrenching. But yeah, that, that's another thing I think comes across with this, this take on it.
I have a question. I have a question. Is, is this going to be, when you talk about social injustice, is this for every race?
Sure. And I think, I think what we're, we're looking for are, I, I, I mean, Mike, did you read the prompt?
No.
And I, okay, well, I would encourage you to read the prompt because I mean, that, that I think that frames, frames the question that we're asking, right, which is, when did, when, when did you feel like you were treated unequally? And, and I think, I don't, I think that we're certainly looking to amplify voices that are marginalized, right? And I think that that's a, that's a piece of what we're doing here. But I don't think that this is, this is saying, I'm sorry, you're white, you can't, you can't be, can't participate. You can certainly share your story. And I think that that's, that's, you know, the, the thing takes all covers. There will have to be some amount of editorial control if we get, if we can't possibly do hundreds of these, we can't possibly, we can't do 50 of these. We'll have to, we'll have to sort through the folks that are interested in participating. And so there will have to be some of, some of that selection, but I don't think there's anything in here that says that that is in, I think it's about personal story.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so I don't know if I can pull this maybe back to what you were asking initially, I think, which is, unless I'm wrong, which is, should we start with one or wait until we get multiples? Is that kind of what you were more looking for today? I mean, I can see it both ways now that I've heard everybody talk about it a little bit. I mean, my first inclination was that more would be helpful. But I did, I did watch the story and, and I can also see where that would be compelling to maybe have more people see, okay, now I understand what this is and I'd like to be heard too. So, I mean, I can definitely see it along those lines if you wanted to put it out as an example.
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal. And, and obviously I can see it both ways too, which is why, one of the reasons I'm asking just for some input and feedback from, from you folks.
But. I'm like, can we get two? Because I know, like, it isn't so good that people are like, we want more. When's the next one? It was like, we're holding off.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got a few, we've got a few asks out and I think our goal would be, would be to do it. But I guess the other question sort of is, like, if, if we can't get something taken care of here in the next, if we don't have any takers here with some direct asks here in the next week or two, I worry that our window is going to start closing. And so I guess, and so maybe that's, maybe the answer is, let's, let's not push it out this week or even early next, but sort of see if we can get, get another one in the can as an example to share. And then, but, but if, if we have, if people say this is so good, I want to, I want more, great, like submit a story and encourage other people to do it too. So like, and our goal would be to then to get several, to get another, you know, eight to 10 in the can and push those all out as sort of that first theory again.
Anything else anyone wanted to add? Okay. Did you have anything else, Nick, before I moved on?
So did my, my proposal sound like a reasonable consensus then? Okay, we'll, we'll give it another week or two to sort of see, see what else we can sort of get taken care of, but, but we're all okay moving forward here in, after that point to sort of put it out and try to, try to build it a little more publicly. Great, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Great Neighborhoods Initiative.
Okay, I'm going to start this and then I'm going to turn it over to Julian, who's done really a lot of the heavy lifting on, on this. So this was a, this was sort of in the, in the, one of the things we've talked about needing in, within the city is, is just better relationships, right? I certainly know that, that there are a lot of folks in North Liberty that are, that when they have a question, they have my cell number, they text me and they feel connected, right? And it's a really easy way for them to, to have their voices heard or to get information to, and that sort of thing. And so, so this was first, this Great, Great Neighborhoods first sort of spawned out this idea of how do we build a better network, make people feel, let people feel more connected, better know their city. You know, we know that there's, there's a lot of groups like HOAs that, that, that sort of help bring neighborhoods together, but, but a lot of neighborhoods also don't have that or don't have an active one. So what we sort of wanted to do is build a framework that would help the city have better communication with, with residents. There's places, pockets where we particularly, where we know there are, there's a gap to help those folk, to help folks throughout the city talk, talk back to the city, let them know what's going on, let them know what they need, ask questions. And then also just to help, help build better connections within those, those communities by essentially helping new, easier to find sort of a point person in your neighborhood. So, so we sort of talked through all these, what that would look like and came up with a few sort of initiatives under, in that framework that we're going to start off with, as well as sort of how this gets built out throughout the, the city of North Liberty, as well as North Liberty as a community. Julian, does that sound like, was that a fair lead in?
Yeah, definitely. I, I can elaborate a little bit on it. If you, I know you guys, if you're looking at your packet too, while we're talking through this, the Great Neighborhoods Initiative, as Nick said, really focuses on building that network of communication to have more information equity citywide, as well as building relationships that should benefit city and residents moving forward. So there's a couple different, I don't want to say, components under this framework. And, and I've had conversations with each of the departments about this initiative. And City Administrator Hare is a fan of this as well to, if, if we can just be a little more top of mind as all departments to kind of circle back to what makes great neighborhoods, what keeps people connected and all of our decision-making and each of our department's approach at customer service, et cetera, is kind of where we're going with this. But a big pillar of this is the Neighborhood Ambassador Program. And I'm really excited about this because I do think it really resonates with conversations we've had in these meetings, since I've been a part of them the past couple of years of how do we reach those people that just aren't already, you know, on our social media, on our email list? Maybe they just for their schedule or whatever means don't have the accessibility to tune in to meetings or come to meetings or to get involved. So the Neighborhood Ambassador Program is really trying to create more equity there across all of our, our residents. So the, the goal, which we would start recruitment for here in about a week or so, later this month for sure, is that if we can't get a ambassador, at least one in each of what we have is 29 designated areas of North Liberty. And if you scroll to the very end of the packet, you will see on the last page, I believe, a map that kind of shows that breakdown. I want to provide a little insight that the breakdown is similar to how the app, the social network Nextdoor breaks down those neighborhoods. And the reason we went with the way they break down those neighborhoods is because Nextdoor will certainly be, for those that have an account, a way that ambassadors can communicate easily to their boundary of their neighborhood. And, and we can get some statistics and get some analytics from that. So it helps us measure. But if we can have an ambassador recruited from each of those areas. if we can have an ambassador recruited from each of those um, areas and have a strong communication and rapport with those ambassadors, um, they can help disseminate our city news, community announcements, um, to their smaller neighborhood area, um, in whatever form works best. Maybe they do have an HOA and they already have a strong email group, or maybe they have a Facebook page for their neighborhood, or maybe they're using Nextdoor, or maybe they know they're going to have to knock on a few doors because they know certain people uh, maybe need the, uh, you know, being told, uh, maybe they realize they need a little flyer or something, and maybe we can help them with that. But getting to know these twenty-nine ambassadors and hopefully, um, a few more than that, because some neighborhoods might need more than one, um, based on the number of households. We can make them excited as an extension and advocate of, of the city um, on the ground there and also provide that, that two-way street that Nick implied of, of hearing back from them. Um, from my discussions with uh, department heads so far, they're excited to survey um, some residents on a more local level rather than just, um, who's getting our emails or on our social page. Um, for instance, even um, Parks Director Guy Goldsmith, talking to an ambassador to help ask around um, neighborhoods that maybe share a certain park. If they're looking at updating some place structure or some amenities, what, what are those folks right there? What are they interested in? Um, apart from just um, communicating what we have, we're also hoping to, um, to our neighborhoods, we're hoping to recruit ambassadors in each senior living center, community, um, to, to strengthen that as well in North Liberty. As well as um, bring on some language neighborhood ambassadors. These being um, for, to serve all of the ambassadors and to work directly with us that as volunteers might be able to help us translate um, some items that we need to and just need to be better at that, which has also been obviously a discussion we've had in these groups too. So, um, the idea of the ambassadors, um, really is to, um, increase um, that, that information. And then besides just, um, sorry, I'm losing track of my thought there. Besides disseminating the information that we want people to be more aware of, we also want them to build the relationships within their neighborhood. So, we're looking at them to um, help coordinate some group activities or gatherings. Um, try to imagine what it could be if we get past COVID. Um, but there certainly are some things they could maybe encourage, um, even in COVID as well. Um, but things like, there's some examples in your packet as well, you know, building a little free library for their neighborhood or painting a storm drain, which you might have seen that we just made that available to residents. Maybe it's putting together a book club. Maybe it's organizing a block party. Um, we certainly don't want to dissuade anyone from, or, you know, make them feel like they don't want to be ambassador because they're not an event coordinator. Um, there can be various levels of this. And the ambassador themselves could just tap other neighbors to help coordinate things too. They don't have to be um, necessarily an event planner. Um, but just things that get people out and talking could be as simple as, hey, on Tuesday nights, let's go. You know, everyone just kind of hangs out on the driveway. That's a thing in our neighborhood now, or it's a full thing like Porch Fest, like Arlington Ridge has done. Um, there can be a wide variety here, but the whole point is that the ambassadors are encouraging people to break out of their comfort zone and making it not so weird to talk someone, to someone new on a walk. Um, so, that's uh, where that comes in. Um, we also have um, talked with the Chief of Police of um, having officer liaisons for each neighborhood as well. Um, I recently got that, that list from her. It's something that they, um, I actually can't remember if they started it, Nick might know, a while back, or if it's something they were starting this summer, but um, on the pages of our website where people will be able to find who their ambassador are, um, they will also be able to see which officers are kind of more assigned on that, when they're, when they're, um, on their shift to certain areas and maybe get to know them a little more for non-emergency, um, kind of contacts. I'm just kind of build those relationships as well. So, um, what I wanted to provide today to you all is the overview. Um, have you looked this over in the packet? Um, it is a volunteer position, ambassadors. Some will give an hour a week, some will give more. I, we don't know everything about this yet. It's totally new. Um, we're going to have to adapt as we go. But the idea is that we'll start recruiting here late this month and recruit until we're done, but it will probably be ongoing as, as things change with folks and they roll on and off. But I, I do want to open up an application for those that are interested and, um, use you all, if you're interested in being part of not only helping spread the word in recruitment, but also maybe helping do a phone call or a Zoom meeting or something and helping us with the selection of these folks. Maybe we'll have a ton of interest and have a lot to go through, or, or maybe we won't. Um, but I'd like you to be as involved as in the process as you would like to be. Um, so I want your feedback on that. Um, I also want to share that we are going to make a, a focus. Certainly anyone from any neighborhood could apply to be an ambassador right away when we launch this, but we'll be a focus on our staff time. And hopefully, um, if you, which of you maybe want to get involved on focusing on some of the harder to reach areas we've already indicated, which I outlined some of those in the packet as well. And maybe when we're done with that and we feel like we've met our goal in those areas, maybe we'll look at the rest of the list and the rest of the list is already filled. Or maybe then we start targeting what areas haven't been filled there. Um, but I'm going to turn it over at this point for questions. Um, let me know what's not clear. Uh, let me know what you think we might be missing and how you would like to be involved.
Um, have you guys heard of Welcoming America?
Yes, and I, that is this month, this week, right?
It is this week. Um, it just, Welcoming America is more focused on welcoming, um, marginalized groups. But I just want to throw that out there as this could be something that, um, the ambassadors could work on for upcoming years for especially welcoming week being this week. Um, but I'm completely on, on board for this and I would help in any way.
Okay. Awesome.
And uh, this isn't going to replace any of the existing Nextdoor communication that Nick does or anything like that. So just more people sharing and agreeing to kind of spread the news that's already out there.
Yeah, I, I think part of the goal here is to make what we do and, and that information more approachable and just have more people who know about it, right? Um, you know, i- it's the kind of thing where if, if, if everybody's responsible for something, nobody's responsible for it. And, and so having point people who, who sort of, who, who acknowledged and take on that mantle of like, I'm going to make sure that I, I know this and, and when, you know, and it could be the person in the neighborhood that everybody's like, hey, Bob, do you know what's, what are they digging up down there? Who knows? Oh, I know, because he's, he's, he's made it sort of his goal in life to, to know this stuff, right? Or it could just be the person that, that is outgoing and is always welcoming folks to the neighborhood. Or it could be, it could be the person who, who, who is already out advocating for, for them and their neighbors. Um, and, and really, so I think it's, it's going to take a bunch of different types of people, but, but it's not going to replace what we do. It's going to, our goal really here is, is to make it uh, is to accentuate, um, and, and to help sort of reach it into those places that, that uh, people might just, for whatever reason, uh, don't, aren't, aren't as plugged in.
And it also will provide our chance to hear from them. What, what are they talking about when they're outside with their neighbors? What are the questions they have? What are the concerns they have? This could be a good sounding board for other commissions, counselors, et cetera. Um, the other thing I didn't hit on was um, kind of trainings and, and just the information through some meetings and um, emails that I would have with the ambassadors to really answer the why behind a lot of things. Um, we can put out some, some information about grass clippings or snow ordinances or things like that. But, but getting some people in every area of North Liberty, understanding the why or questioning the why in some instances and us looking into a why. Um, but having the, the why behind some decisions or a heads up about something, um, you know, is, is another reason, um, that a neighbor might hear their neighbor telling them something in a way that reading of something from the city isn't, isn't coming across.
I appreciate you talking about the training component because I do think that with these individuals going out, that there should be a training component, especially in regards to cultural humility.
Yes.
Um, because they, even though they might be the talk of the, of the street, you know, they may not be as comfortable, uh, when it comes to communicating with people who are different from them. So.
Absolutely. That is, um, we're looking at having the ambassadors be able to join any city trainings that are already being put on, um, whether that's implicit bias trainings or stereotypes or um, diversity, whatever, um, Angela, um, if the city is coordinating for staff, we'll certainly open up to our ambassadors and we'll also put on other trainings for them. Um, specifically, we want to make sure, and you know, kind of the, the calls and vetting that you all might help with. We want to know someone's motivations and comforts and, and understanding if they're a good fit for this volunteer position. Um, and besides trainings like that, we're also looking at just letting them understand more the inner workings of how city works. How the budgeting process works, touring city facilities. Um, so kind of two different types of trains, but definitely want to make sure that they're well equipped to work with people. And I also want to say, um, that we are not trying to make the ambassadors be a mediator between any neighborhood issues. Um, certainly we hope that over time, and this is more of those long-term goals, by, by them being someone their neighbors know is open for them to, to come to with questions and providing and creating these neighborhood engagement opportunities. We hope that people that maybe don't talk to someone that's not like them down the street get to know each other. Um, and that when there are issues or concerns or um, a dog barking or hey, that person in the corner never shovels their driveway, but I've never told them myself. You know, maybe they will um, get to know each other more and, and some of these um, relationships and, and problem solving might naturally happen, um, without involving law enforcement or whatever it might be. But we certainly want the ambassadors to know, and we'll make this clear, that they are not to be the mediator or to step in between a conflict and be expected to solve it, but maybe provide some information if someone comes to them.
Yeah, Jillian, I really like that, uh, that approach that you're taking. It's uh, doing what I've done in the past, um, like, it, it's helpful to have a really good listening skill. You know, more than have all the knowledge, have all the, um, take on all the responsibility, you know, because a person could get overwhelmed if they just took on another problem for someone else. But having good listening skills, I would think would be a really good prompt criteria. I like what I hear. I like, I like the fact that you're trying to bring the community together and in the, you know, ambassadors and appointing ambassadors for different areas of the, the, of the city. I really like that. And then they, then, then you become more of a community. Start talking to neighbors. I know, then I live in a condo association and we know pretty much all of our condo members. Uh, but we don't know a lot of the residents around, around this, you know, up and down the street.
Yeah.
I like, I like this. I think this.
Thank you. Yeah.
I have a question. What's the process for soliciting these people, trying to get them on board? How are you going to advertise?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we'll certainly also be growing in that way as we learn what's working and what's not. But one of the things we plan on doing to start is, um, well, today actually, Derek and I, um, recorded a, a promo. So we did create a, an ambassador recruitment video to try to explain this. So we'll, we'll launch that. We will also advertise, I'm going to host three different online sessions, similar to what we did when we advertised, like the listing posts here, different times you can, you can join on, where people can um, learn about and ask, ask questions about it with me. Um, where people can just join, I can explain it in more detail outside of what they maybe will have seen on the website already before joining. Um, granted, both those things are digital, right? So we got to find other ways to reach people. Um, we'll certainly put out a, a press release. We hope to get some news coverage. Um, hopefully we could publish something in the North Liberty Leader or, um, the No Joke Co. We want to work with all of you as well, um, to see what areas of town you particularly live in or connections you might have people in towns that we can actually start to tap you guys or other notable people in the community on, on who they know, who could we start talking to, who can we invite to conversations, whether that's a one-on-one phone call with me, me meeting them somewhere distantly to talk about it, um, inviting them to these online sessions to learn more. Um, we will have the online application as well as I'll have some paper applications that I'll make, be made available. Um, open to a lot of ideas too, because the whole reason we're creating the ambassador program is to be able to reach people more on the ground. And, um, it would be nice to have ambassadors to help spread the news about this ambassador program, but we need to, um, start, start where we can. So, um, we'll certainly tell all of our, our partners, organizations, businesses in the area. Um, but we are not recruiting at this time, business ambassadors. That would just be a way to help spread the word to, to community members. Uh, we could look at a targeted postcard mailing as well. Um, seeing if, if mail would make sense to some neighborhoods, if we're having a harder time hearing from some folks too. Do you guys have ideas on particular ways you'd like to see us do recruitment, particularly to harder, hard to reach areas?
How has it been, um, for, what is it? It's not like those pot, what is it called? The potlucks? The neighborhood potluck?
Yeah.
For those dimmer, I'll have to get deeper on it. Streetwise, were you able to hit those hard to reach areas?
You know, I would, I'd have to look back at all the addresses to be able to fully answer that question for you. I do believe the first round looking at that, so we had two events in person in two thousand nineteen. So after the first one, I think that I, I got, I got us, I think that we were lower as expected on those harder to reach areas. I think we hit some, but I, I would have to look. Um, we are hosting a virtual placemates though, since you're on the topic on Good Neighbor Day, which um, is September twenty-eighth, a virtual version, at which I will also announce this program, thinking that those that are attending that might be really good candidates to be an ambassador. Um, but they're also the people that have already heard about things and, and yeah, they'll be good ambassadors, but we also need to reach people that. I want people that are ambassadors that I do not know. I do, I want to be a ton of new people. I don't want to come up with a list of people I already know in the community that can be half my ambassadors. You know, that doesn't really get us any further. Certainly, I'll probably know some of them, um, because they have probably been engaged, but I really want to meet new people through this. I think it'd be good for me to tell all the churches in the area about this, just to hit, um, different residents that way. So we'll be using all efforts we can. Um, I would love to door knock if that made sense right now, but I can't. Um, so, it would be helpful. Um, I know Tom, you sent us some names of people when we talked about, um, the social injustice video series that we were able to follow up with. So, if likewise, after this conversation, if you guys can email us, anyone that you think, maybe they're not an ambassador, but I bet they know someone who could be in an ambassador or lives in these areas that also might be able to indicate someone. It's going to be very grassroots and I'd be open to sharing that with me. So I can just call them, bug their brain a little bit, um, get some things moving. Cause I think what it's going to take is individual conversations to get people to the information to read it, to, to learn about it and to, uh, make a decision if it's something that interests them. And it's going to take time. I fully expect that we wouldn't have a full roster of ambassadors until end of this year. Um, thinking that a lot of those actual neighbor engagement things comes to be when weather turns nicer, hopefully when we're a better pandemic situation. I'm thinking spring, summer next year, but that communication component of making sure everyone has, um, access to information should start as soon as we can. Um, I would imagine by January. Good questions. If you guys know anyone too, that's, could be a language ambassador or has a research to, the recent, um, reference that I think our senior center, um, our senior living community ambassadors will most likely be a staff person at those locations, but not sure.
Can you tell us the organizations that can spread on the word about it, um, that have members that are part of, that live in North Liberty?
Okay. Yeah.
Anyone else have anything to add? Questions, comments? I think to be honest, uh, since I was saying, I was talking about Welcoming America and this is being Welcome Week. This might be really a good opportunity, um, to start talking about that because it is about welcoming your neighbors.
Yeah.
So, if you have the opportunity to advertise it during Welcome Week, that might be an incentive.
Does that end this Sunday?
It does end this Sunday.
It's possible. It's possible that we could be. Uh, we wanted to have this conversation and see what came out of it and see what we needed to do. Um, we did have it as a possibility to, to be ready earlier, but at this point we were thinking early next week, but we'll certainly chat as a staff tomorrow and, We did have it as a possibility to, to be ready earlier, but at this point we were thinking early next week, but we'll certainly chat as a staff tomorrow and, and discuss that timeline. Keesha, I appreciate your support and willingness to do whatever we might need help with. So I'll certainly follow up with you on that. Mike, I feel like you might've said a similar notion. Can I hear from everyone on your interest in being part of selecting ambassadors or recruiting or both?
I would just like, yeah, I would be interested, but I, can you come up, maybe you already have it and maybe this is a dumb question, but a job description?
Yeah.
Ambassador themselves or, or what we're asking from you?
What you're asking as an ambassador.
What we want ambassadors to do.
What do you, yeah. What do you want us to do? Want us, what does an ambassador do?
So are you asking whether you would be interested in being an ambassador yourself, or are you saying as a commissioner, what are you asking me to do to help select ambassadors?
Yeah, as a commissioner, well, both, both, but as a commissioner, I'm asking, you know, well.
Yeah, I do have, I do have, um, I feel like in the packet on pages 14, 15, 16, it kind of covers what the ambassadors would be. I do have it laid out on a draft on a website. That's not public right now. That's a little more clear. Written in what does it mean to be an ambassador? So I would certainly provide all of that as well as what I would be looking for. If, if we get you know, 30 things and I want a couple of different folks to just touch base with these people and, and, and kind of do some questions to make sure that they're on board for what we're hoping ambassadors would be before officially. You know, signing them up as a volunteer. I certainly will guide you through that if you're interested.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I don't think we're under any impression that, that we're going to, you know, ask for, you know, 29 or, or we had a specific number in my, right? And, and that will end up with a hundred people, but it would certainly be helpful. Even if, even if we have sort of that bare minimum, just to, to have you folks sort of call and, and just do a double check and, and make sure that, that we've got good people that are doing it. And, and also I think it'd be a, a helpful thing to sort of ultimately have a slate that, that, that you folks all sort of say like, yep, that looks good. In the same way that the council would, would commissioners, for example.
Yeah. And, and the expectations of ambassadors is actually bolted out on page 15 specifically. But it, it is more encompassing than that as far as just like the, the mindset of community and bringing people together. That will be most important.
I think the reason why I'm still on board with this is that this is something that we're doing at the county and we're doing DNI diversity and inclusion ambassadors. And the way that I'm pulling people in is DNI ambassador swag, so t-shirts, pins. I, this is something is, you know, you don't.
Yeah. No, no, that's great. That's great. Um, I really hope that this, I feel very passionately about it and I hope that it grows to accomplish everything. I think it could. I think there's some really short-term gains, but I think it's really long-term gains. And the pandemic definitely showed us that we need to pull together and be able to reach all of our neighbors and neighborhoods. Even the Durach show in Cedar Rapids shows, you know, it's, you need to reach people in all the neighborhoods to be able to help them and know what's going on. And, and that's just not something that communities are well equipped to do with people on the ground. And I hope that long-term, something like this could really have some, some great benefits to community building and, and making sure everyone feels like they have some, you know, point person.
I, I have a comment. I'm an active member of a church that started in North Liberty that has grown and moved to a place in Corvo, but most of its congregation is from North Liberty and it's a thousand-member congregation. So I would have access to advertise in some way to those folks.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Great.
I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, I was just thinking and tell me if my audio is bad. I had to switch my phone here for some reason. Okay. Well, I think Nick mentioned earlier, some people are just kind of born for this kind of thing. And I can already think of a few people around my neighborhood who will probably be volunteering before I could pick. So as you know, I don't know timeline wise, but I think if you put it out, I have a feeling that in, especially in some neighborhoods around here, people have a lot of pride in their neighborhood, a lot of, they're just kind of that natural person who wants to get bored about, yeah, they're just sitting and already they, they want to host parties and things like that. So I would love to help out, but maybe see which one of those people kind of naturally, you know, gravitate to those positions first and then see what we have, uh, what we have to fill in. Cause I think we'll get the best people that, that are really volunteering on their own.
I can certainly keep you guys updated too, as recruitment's going on, like what areas we're hearing from and not hearing from, so that you can think, well, I know plenty of people there. I should tap them on the shoulder. Tom, do you have any thoughts? Put you on the spotlight here.
No, it's all right. It's a wonderfully ambitious program. I'm kind of in the group right now that's really hunkered down. So it's kind of hard to see how, uh, old people like me are going to, want to, going to be able to get out into the community and, and not put themselves at risk. I'm anxious to also see how much response you can get in your search for ambassadors. Amazing piece of work. Um, you know, like you say, it's a, it's very ambitious and I hope it works. Have you seen a model like this anywhere else?
Um, you know, when we started thinking about, well, so when we started talking, how do we reach these harder to reach, I know, communities, making sure everyone's getting the same information, we thought about the ambassadors and I started um, writing up the ambassadors. And at first it was just that. Um, and then we started thinking, oh, maybe this is more of a framework. Maybe we should make this broader as a citywide adoption and include things like National Good Neighbor Day and include events like placemates, include a bunch of the components. And in my research for the ambassadors, I did find like a university that had ambassadors for, you know, the students really, you know, um, being ambassadors to work with the, the greater community. So that there's more integration between their students and, and their general population. Um, and then I also saw one example from California, I believe, and I have these links to go back to, I remember saving them, but there was a community in California that did have something that I don't know if they called it neighborhood investors or liaisons, but it, it seemed similar in, in their effort. Um, I have not reached out to them. Um, I did find examples of officer liaisons for different neighborhoods, for also non-emergency purposes to build relationships there, but a lot of this, gosh, I have to work on it for a while. It's kind of hard to know where everything came from, but certainly I was inspired by some things I saw. Yeah.
Waterloo had, had, I don't know whether they still do a group of what they called ambassadors. And I think there are other cities too, but there, that wasn't really a neighborhood program. It was more of a, a community leader sort of program where they went out and they welcomed businesses and things like that. They might be able to give you some ideas of what problems they've run into if, if you're looking for other input. The only other thing that I did notice when I was reading through here, it's very clever the way you spelled neighbors with their goals. The, and you, you made a point with the N, I noticed when something seems off, you made a point that the ambassadors are not supposed to be mediating and things of that nature. You might want to tweak the N there and because it, it, it could be looked at as saying this person's going to be the eyes of the city in the neighborhood. Now you and I, I think you want to avoid that fairly strongly. Other than that, amazing.
Um, Nick's muted, but I do want to say the, um, I don't, we need to be clear too, that this is not, the focus of this can remind people of national neighborhood watches that have been around for a long time. And, and while neighborhood watch approaches, um, its process with the intent of community policing more so, this might have some of that effect, you know, but our, our purpose and what was at our forefront. So we do need to think carefully about our communication, Tom, and I'll relook at that. Is that this is all about making sure everyone has equal access to information about the community, access to someone that can get them directed to the right community resources, can make sure that everyone feels welcome to visit with their neighbors, is part of their community and not part of just a click, a, a certain part of the block. And, and hopefully some more of that community, community policing and, and we'll come along with that. But if you guys receive that question, I just want to be clear that while there will be some benefits, it might be similar to neighborhood watch. We're trying to take the approach of just more building relationships rather than any kind of policing.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think the idea here is more, you notice the, the person who always shovels their walk. Hasn't done it for a couple of days and, and that, that seems weird and, and just being aware of that and you know, being able to text them, say, hey, Tom, uh, notice you didn't, uh, everything going okay over there, or, or, or just sort of that kind of thing, being aware of your surroundings. But, but I agree that we need to make sure that it doesn't come off as neighborhood watchy in a way that it's not intended to.
But you could rephrase it just right off the top of my head to saying, and notice when somebody has a need. Something like that as opposed to when something is off, it just implies something slightly different.
Sure.
I would, the, uh, the city is not part of welcoming America. I highly suggest they become a member of welcoming America. Because there's so many resources, resources that I've came across through welcome America that I, I wasn't even aware of. And it definitely will help you in this initiative with the, I keep on wanting to say DNI ambassadors, but North Liberty ambassadors.
You know, Keisha, I do want to touch base with you on that because knowing that the county is officially a member of welcoming America as well as Cedar Rapids and Iowa City.
Yeah.
I believe, um, I'm interested in some of the member resources too, on maybe some trainings or resources that we could share as members or maybe as a member of the county that we can use. So I wanted to make sure I circle back with you on that.
Okay. Anyone else? This is like the longest meeting that we've had.
For your feedback, that, that will help a lot and I'll, I'll keep in touch with each of you with what you've mentioned. Thanks.
Thank you for this initiative. I think it's going to be great. All right. So we're going to move on to next agenda item, old business. Any old business we want to talk about? New business? All right, ending this meeting.
A motion to adjourn?
You want to second that?
Second.
All right. All in favor of closing out this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you guys. And thank you, Angel, for being part of our group. We look forward to working with you.
Look forward to it too. Nice to meet you guys.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Bye.